Hi everyone, welcome back to another video. So welcome to another episode of the Bible Study Sessions. Today I'm gonna talk about Hebrews chapter 11. For those of you who haven't watched the past episodes, I'm gonna put them all in the description below. As always, I will be reading from the New King James Version on the U version Bible Online. This translation is pretty accurate if you compare it to the Greek text. And it has the references, which once again are gonna help you to connect different passages of the Bible, Old Testament with the New Testament. And once again, it's very useful for studying. But what I strongly recommend you is to read the internal Bible. In this one, you have the actual Greek text, word by word translation. In case you have some questions, doubts about passages, or you're gonna dive deeper into the meaning, you can always come here and you can check the themology, the usage, the definition, the lexicon, some additional commentary, context, and it's very, very helpful. Now, as always, my goal is to summarize the most important concepts and truths that we can learn from this chapter in an easy and simple way, so that anyone can follow and anyone can try to understand what are the things that the Word of God wants to teach us. So I will read in the whole chapter first, and then I'm gonna break it down. So Hebrews chapter 11. "Now faith is the substance of things hoped for, the evidence of things not seen; for by it the elders obtain a good testimony. By faith we understand that the words were framed by the word of God, so that the things which are seen were not made of things which are visible. By faith Abel offered to God a more excellent sacrifice than Cain, through which he obtained a witness that he was righteous, and got testifying of these gifts; and through it he being dead still speaks. By faith Anok was taken away, so that he did not see death, and was not found, because God had taken him; for before he was taken he had this testimony, that he pleased God. But with a faith it is impossible to please him; for he who comes to God must believe that he is, and that he is a rewarder of those who diligently seek him. By faith Noah, being divinely warned of things not yet seen, moved with godly fear, prepared an ark for the saving of his household, by which he condemned the world, and became heir of the righteousness, which is according to faith. By faith Abraham obeyed when he was called to go out to the place which he received as inheritance; and he went out, not knowing where he was going. By faith he dwelt in the land of promise, as in a foreign country; dwelling in tents with Isaac and Jacob, adheres with him of the same promise; for he waited for the city which has foundations, whose builder and maker is God. By faith Sarah herself also received strength to conceive seed, and she bore a child when she was past the age, because she judged him faithful who hath promised. Therefore from one man, and him as good as death, were born as many as the stars of the sky, in multitude, innumerable as the sand which is by the seashore. These all died in faith, not having received the promises, but having seen them afar off, were assured of them, embraced them, and confessed that they were strangers and pilgrims on the earth. For those who say such things declare plainly that they seek a homeland; and truly, if they had called to mind that country from which it had come out, they would have opportunity to return; but now they desire a better, that is, a heavenly country. Therefore God is not ashamed to be called their God, for he has prepared the city for them. By faith Abraham, when he was tested, offered up Isaac, and he who had received the promises offered up his only begotten son, of whom it was said, in Isaac your seed shall be called, concluding that God was able to raise him up, even from the dead, from which he also received him in a figurative sense. By faith Isaac blessed Jacob and Ezo concerning things to come. By faith Jacob, when he was dying, blessed each of the sons of Joseph, and worshiped, leaning on the top of his staff. By faith Joseph, when he was dying, made mention of the departure of the children Israel, and gave instructions concerning his bones. By faith Moses, when he was born, was hidden three months by his parents, because they saw he was a beautiful child, and they were not afraid of the king's command. By faith Moses, when he became of age, refused to be called the son of the Pharaoh's daughter, choosing rather to suffer affliction with the people of God than to enjoy the passing pleasures of sin, estimating the reproach of Christ greater riches than the treasures in Egypt, for he looked to the reward. By faith he forsook Egypt, not fearing the wrath of the king, for he endured as seeing him who is invisible. By faith he kept the Passover and the sprinkling of blood, lest he who destroyed the first one should touch them. By faith they passed the Red Sea as by dry land, whereas the Egyptians attempting to do so were drowned. By faith the walls of Jericho fell down after they were encircled for seven days. By faith the harlot Rahab did not perish with those who did not believe, when she had received the spies with peace. And what more shall I say? For the time would fail me to tell of Gideon, and Barak, and Samson, and Japhet, also of David and Samuel, and the prophets, who through faith subdued kingdoms, worked righteousness, obtained promises, stopped the mouth of lions, quenched the vines of fire, escaped the edge of this world; out of weakness were made strong, became violent in battle, turned to flight the armies of the Indians. Women received the dead, their dead raised to life again. Others were tortured, not accepting deliverance, that they may obtain a better resurrection. Still others had trials of mockings and scourgings, yes, and of chains and imprisonment. They were stoned, they were sunning too, were tempted, were slain with a sword. They wandered about in sheepskins and goatskins, being destitute, afflicted, tormented, of whom the world was not worthy. They wandered in deserts and mountains, in dens and caves of the earth. And all these, having obtained a good testimony through faith, did not receive the promise, yet having provided something better for us, that they should not be made perfect apart from us. And that's the end of the chapter. Now, before I start trying to explain the most important truths of this chapter, you can already see why this chapter is called the chapter of faith. The word faith here is used a lot of times. And now it's very important that, like, I'm gonna try to show you what is the biblical concept of faith, and what is the Christian faith that here is talking about. Now faith, very, very simply, if we read the whole Bible, is the act, so it's our choice to believe in God, and to believe in Christ, especially in what Christ has done for us. That is faith. So faith is pretty much believing. That's why faith, believing, trust in are all synonyms in the Bible. They're used in one sense or the other. Now, there is a difference in believing that and believing in. And our faith is believing in, right? So when we say believing that, for example, we believe that smoking is bad for your health, that smoking could cause, like, increases the risk of having a lung cancer. But despite believing that or knowing that, you can still reject it, right? And you can still keep on smoking. So in the same sense, when we say that we believe that God exists, or we believe that God is good, or that Jesus is the Son of God, or that Jesus rose from the dead, or that in Him we can be saved, but we don't act on it, we are lacking faith. Because despite all that knowledge and all those beliefs that we have, we're not acting on them. Instead, when the Bible talks about faith, it talks about believing in. So we have the knowledge, plus we have the act of believing in God and in Christ. And that's exactly what James in chapter 2, verse 19 says. He says, I'm gonna quote it, "You believe that there is one God; you do well; even demons believe and tremble." So that was the difference, right? Because when we believe that even demons and even the devil believes that God exists, believes that he's the one true God, and they believe, and they know what is gonna be their end, right? But despite that, they're not believing in God or in Christ, right? They're rejecting, they're actually fighting against God. So that's the difference between believing that, right, and believing in. When the Bible talks about faith, it's talking about believing in. Now, the Christian faith is not a blind faith. So it's not a faith that is, that doesn't have any evidence. The Christian faith is actually grounded on the evidence that God has provided for us through creation in Romans 1, through our conscience and our sense of morality, and that's in Romans chapter 2. And then it's through God's revelation to us through His scriptures. So all God's miracles, all the prophecies of the Old Testament being actually being fulfilled, God's mighty hand in action. And that's more evidence that supports that what God says is true, and that he exists, and that he has those qualities. Of course, we can't prove that 100%, because we can't prove 100% anything, right? So the Christian faith is grounded and based on all the evidence that God has already given us. Of course, we can't know everything for sure 100%, and that's why we need the extra leap of faith, or the extra act of believing in and trusting in Him, even if we don't have all the answers, even if we don't understand everything properly. So that's the Christian definition of faith. And when the Bible speaks about faith, it speaks not about having a blind faith, so believing against or despite the evidence, but it's believing because of the evidence. Of course, we can reach with the evidence as a sense of stage, then we can't prove, right? Because we're talking about spiritual things, we're talking about nature of God, that it's something outside our universe, right? Something unlimited eternal, right? It's even outside our understanding. And that's why we need faith. So despite those limits in our understanding, and in the evidence, in the things that we can prove, but still we believe in Him, alright? So now, having this thing in mind, we're gonna approach Hebrews chapter 11. You're gonna see how much more clearer it's gonna be having this concept of faith, understanding what faith is. So in the first verse, we have actually this definition in terms of how faith expresses itself. So this act of believing in God, right, is expressed is in having the assurance of things hoped for. So the Greek word here for substance is actually hypothesis. That it's, in my opinion, more properly translated with assurance, so something that stays like as a foundation, right? So it's like the foundation of things that we hope for. Now, of course, when the Bible talks about hope, it's not talking about vain hope, or like, I hope that this is gonna happen. It's talking about the assurance of the things we're gonna hope for in the future. So things that God has promised, that he still hasn't accomplished yet. For example, our final adoption, the redemption of our bodies. Our bodies are gonna finally be free from sin, and they're gonna be eternal, right? Our future glory in Christ, the revelation of the sons of God. All these things in Romans 8 are this hope that we have. So this hope is grounded in the assurance, and the Holy Spirit testifies with our spirit that these things are true. But why do we need to hope for them? Because we're not seeing them yet, happened. That's what we hope for them. But it's not like a hope, but it's a hope grounded in the assurance of who God is, because God has promised it, then he's gonna accomplish it. And then the second here, he is evidence of things not seen. So how faith, so this act of believing in God, expresses itself as evidence, or as proof, if we go to the Greek here. He says, "alankos", that's translated as like proof, test, right, persuasion. And I have to say the word evidence of things not seen. Once again, things not seen are, things are immaterial, right? Things are outside the physical universe of the things that we can actually see. So it's talking here about spiritual things, and even things about like, for example, love, right? Can you see love? You can't, right? Or peace, faithfulness. All these things, right, are by themselves like immaterial, right? There are concepts, they're metaphysical things, so they're not actually physical. And our faith is the evidence, so it's the proof of these things that we can see, right? We, with the proofs, we see God in action, we see His miracles, we see His prophecies, we see His promises being fulfilled. So we can see Him in a sense, we can see God's actions and God's revelation to us, but we can't see Him. But that is enough, right? Because it's evidence for us, it's enough for us to believe in Him and to trust in Him, even if we don't have all the answers, and even if we can't be 100% sure of this. So that's why we need faith, alright? Now, this chapter is pretty much just a long list of examples of how faith acts, right? And for example, in verse 3, we have the, that by faith we understand and we know how God created everything, the universe. That with this word, God created the universe out of nothing. The things that are seen were made not of things which are visible. So God created everything, the universe, from nothing, right? It's not like God rearranged something that was already there. No, no, He created everything out of nothing. Now, can we be sure 100% that this is true? No. So that's why we need faith. But we can deduce from many properties of the universe, right? There are many arguments for God's existence, if we look at the universe, like the beginning of the universe, the fine tuning of the universe, that what the Bible teaches and how God created everything is actually true, even if we can't properly understand it completely, right? And, or even understand how He did it, but we can trust in Him to know that He did it in that way, how He explained it to us in Genesis. So that's the faith, right? So that's the first thing. We have some evidence for it that can help us understand, okay, this is actually true. We can't prove it 100%, but that's enough for us to believe in Him. And again, we have many different examples of Abel here, sacrifice being better than his brother Cain. And you can find, if you wanna read the actual stories from when these characters are taken from, you can always go here and check the references. For example, here, I can go in Genesis chapter 4, and you're gonna find the story of Abel and Cain. Then we have Anok. Anok was one of the two people that we have in the Bible, that didn't go through death, so that didn't die. And the second one is Elijah. And again, you can find his story in Genesis chapter 5, you can see even here the verses. And again, which is, was, why was Anok taken up to heaven? Because of faith, right? Because he pleased God. The Bible says in Genesis that he, that Anok, walked with God. And this denotes a very close relationship with God, as if with a friend. And God was so pleased with Anok that he actually took him to heaven. He didn't even let Anok to die. And this pleasing God comes through faith, so through believing in Him, right? We have evidence, we have this assurance of things hoped for, based on God's nature, God's character, what things that God has already done. We have this evidence for the things that are not seen, right? It's not enough to satisfy all the answers, to know everything, to understand everything, to prove everything 100%, but it's enough to let us know that these things are true. And then we add, we do the leap of faith, right? And we trust in God and believe in Him despite the fact that we don't know everything. And then it says here, "Without faith it is impossible to please Him." So it's using the same word that is used before for Anok, right? Because of two reasons here. It says, "For he who comes to God," so draws near to God, "must believe that he is," so he exists, so in a sense, God's nature is the one that God reveals, and that he is a rewarder of those who diligently seek Him. God is gonna, if you're diligently seeking Him, God is gonna make Himself be found by you. God is gonna reveal Himself to you, and He's gonna reward anyone who's gonna call for Him, who's gonna search for Him. Jesus said, "Seek, and you will find; knock, and will be opened to you." So that's how important it is to have faith, right? Because we have assurance, we have evidence, know 100%, right? But that is enough to let us know that God is real, that God is true. That's why we don't have any excuse in front of Him to disbelieve in Him. And that, so at the same time, we have to approach Him with this faith attitude, right? Believing who He is, and that He's gonna reward us, right? He's gonna reveal Himself to us. And that's how we can please Him in this way. We have more examples. We have Noah, right, the ark, and the flood that came. So once again, Noah believed in God, right? Noah believed in Him, probably Noah didn't understood, didn't understand like everything, right, that God told him, but he believed in Him. He built the ark, he obeyed God, and that's why he and his household were saved. And again, we have more examples. We have Abraham. We have different examples of Abraham. We have how Abraham obeyed by faith when he was called to go out of the place of his ancestors, and instead go to the land that God would eventually give him as inheritance, and that is like the promised land, right? And Abraham obeyed by faith, so he just trusted God in this. He didn't know where he was going, right? He didn't know that God, how God would be able to accomplish this, but he just trusted in Him. And again, he dwelt in the land, right, as in a foreign country. And then he waited, right, for the city which has foundations, which whose builder and maker is God. And this is actually a reference to the tents, right? It says here dwelling in tents. Tents were by definition something that you put on, you just stay a couple of time, and then you move on, you move on, it's like something that moves. Instead, the city which has foundations is something that you build, and then it stays there, right? So of course, this is actually a reference to the new Jerusalem, the final city that's gonna descend from heaven, during the new heavens and new earth. That is gonna be the place in which all believers, and everyone who has called on the name of the Lord, who has trusted in Him, who has faith in Him, who has been saved, is gonna live, and it's gonna work for God. So yeah, that's just the meaning. And then also his wife, Sarah, even if, you know, she was past the age to be able to conceive, she was barren, and on top of that, she was old. She was more than like 90 years old, so she was very old. But still, she received strength to conceive seed, to conceive Isaac, and to bear him, right? And why? Because of faith. Even if she didn't trust it at the beginning, like she laughed, she couldn't see how God would be able to use her own old body to accomplish His promise, but even if she disbelieved at the beginning, but then she eventually believed in Him. And that's why she considered God to be faithful, right, and to honor His word, His promise. And then here, the author says, "From one man," so from Abraham, "and him as good as that," because also Abraham was old. So it was both Sarah and Abraham that were old. So their bodies were as dead, right? "But through them the seed came, and all the descendants, and all the promise," right, that God went through him. "And were born as many as stars of the sky, and as much as countless as the sand on the seashore." And that's actually some quotes from Genesis, from God's own promise to Abraham. God said to Abraham, "I'm gonna make your seed, your descendants, right, to be as numerous as the stars in the sky, and as numerous as the sand in the seashore." And so we have different examples, you can see here. And again, verses from 13 to 16 just talk about this hope, not just in that physical promised land, right, in the inheritance that God gave them, but in the eternal promise, in the eternal city, in the eternal promise that will actually be fulfilled in Christ, as we have seen in all the previous chapters in this letter. So again, they did not receive it completely, because all these people in the Old Testament came before Christ, you know, and God the Son became flesh and dwelt among us. They were all before His time. But we know that Jesus' sacrifice is actually enough for also to atone for the sins that were committed previously. So even to the ones believing in God, right? They receive the righteousness of Christ, even if Christ would die centuries and centuries afterwards. So that's how Christ sacrificed, you know, it covers even the sins, and it justifies even people that lived before Him. They see these promises from afar, right? And we have many types and many images of Christ in the Old Testament, and of the Messiah, right? And again, they were seeking, right, a homeland. They were considered as all strangers and pilgrims on the earth. They were seeking this eternal homeland, not just a physical place, right, but a heavenly country and a heavenly city. And yeah, you know, God has prepared this place for them, and not only for them, but for all those who are gonna believe in Him. And then we have more examples of Abraham, how Abraham, by faith, always remember by faith, he obeyed God, even when God asked him to sacrifice and to kill his son, so Isaac, that was the son of the promise, right? Abraham obeyed, and he was about to kill Isaac, when God stopped him, said, "Okay, okay, now I know that you believe in me." So, and why did Abraham did it? Because Abraham thought that even if God allows me to kill this son that is the son of the promise, somehow God can even raise him up from the dead. So, and of course, we know that this is actually a figure of Christ. That Christ would actually be that lamb that comes, and they sacrificed instead of Isaac, right? That atones for the sins once for all. And then we have more examples here, Isaac, how he again prophesied on Jacob and Ezo. Then we have again Jacob blessing sons of Joseph, worshiping. And if you wanna again dive deeper into the meaning of this text, you have all the references right here. And again, Joseph, you know, prophesying the exodus, so this word in Greek is actually Exodus. So when Moses came and delivered these rites from Egypt, and then these instructions concerning his bones, the fact that these rites would eventually come out from Egypt and finally dwell into the inheritance, into the promised land that God had promised already to Abraham. Then we have Moses, we have many examples of Moses. We have when he was a child, right, that his parents hid him, and he wasn't killed. The fact that when Moses grew up, knowing that he was a Hebrew, right, knowing that he was a Jew, he refused the Pharaoh's position of authority, of power, not being in the family of Pharaoh, but instead he chose to be with the people of God and to suffer affliction, right? Then to enjoy the passing pleasures of sin, estimating the reproach of Christ greater riches than the treasures in Egypt. And this once again makes you understand, right? Moses lived thousands of years before Christ. So how can he estimate the reproach of Christ greater riches than the treasures in Egypt? Because he believed in God, so he trusted God, that even the sufferings that he would go through because of Him, right? That would be greater riches, and that would actually be a eternal reward. And again, Christ, even if Christ didn't come yet, but still, it was like the sufferings of Christ applying on Him, and therefore Him receiving salvation and justification. Again, the fact that he came out of Egypt, he went to Midian, that's when God meets him, and that's when God commands him to go and deliver his people, the Israelites, enduring as seeing him who is invisible. Once again, we have this theme, right, of things not seen. So Moses persevered, endured, as he was able to see God, right? That is invisible, but as if he was able to see Him, right? How wonderful that is. And again, how he obeyed God concerning the Passover, we had to do for the last plague of the, of the ten plagues, right, in Egypt. How they go through the Red Sea, once again, always by faith. Then we have more examples, the walls of Jericho, right? That they fall down when the Israelites just went in circles, and then after seven times, they blew the trumpets, and that's when the walls came down. So once again, it's just a miracle, right, how God acted in that way. And they, very simply, they just trusted in Him, right? They obeyed what God commanded them to do. And again, Rahab, no, not believing in, no, I've heard about this nation, or how mighty works God has made among you. So, no, I'm gonna heed you, right, I'm gonna save you, but please spare my household. And that's why they were, they were the only ones that were spared. And actually, they were, you know, introduced into the lineage of Christ. So that's just how God can exalt even someone that is, you know, in a condition that we would call sinful, but even them, if they believe in Him, right, they can be restored, they can be redeemed. And again, and the other in sources, and what more shall I say, right? For the time would fail me to talk about Gideon, Barak, Samson, Japhet, David, Samuel, the prophets, all these characters in the Old Testament, who through faith, so again, always faith in action, right? This belief in God being applied on, being acted on, even, you know, if they didn't know everything, even if they didn't understand everything, but they still, they had the evidence that God had provided for them yet until that time. And through it, they subdued kingdoms, worked righteousness, obtained promises, stopped lions. Okay, here, violence of fire, escaped the edge of this war, so they were able to, don't die, right, don't get killed. Out of weakness they were made strong, violent in battle, turned to flight the armies of the strangers. And women again receiving their death raised to life again. And then we have that others instead were tortured. So we have the good side, so that through faith, we can, we can do, right, all these things, but also through faith, through faith, right? We can also be tortured for the name and for the sake of Christ. You know, hoping to obtain a better resurrection. And then we can be mocked, we can receive scourges, we can be put in chains, we can be imprisoned, right? They were stoned, they were sunning too, tempted, slain with a sword. So they gave their life for God in what they believed in God. So because of their faith, they were killed. So you can see here the two aspects of faith, right? Sometimes faith is gonna make you do great things. Sometimes faith is gonna make you receive sufferings, and that's just how it is, you know? And despite what happens, if positives or negatives, we keep on believing and having faith in God. That's the message of this chapter. And again, "of whom the world was not worthy." And, and then it says at the very end, the conclusion, right? It says that all these, all these characters, that that through faith obtained all these great things, and also know were tortured, and they were, um, they were, um, they wanted, like, they had so much, um, yeah, I don't know how to express it in English, sorry. Um, but even though they knew they would receive sufferings, they still, uh, thought that it would be worthy to do it for God. So they honor God with their lives, no matter the consequences. So that's why God has, is gonna give us rewards, right? And about all these people, right? Even if they had a good testimony through faith, they did not receive the promise, because the ultimate promise is actually Christ. God having provided something better for us, because now we are coming after Christ. Now we know Christ, we know the Messiah, we know what he has done. And, and therefore, they are made perfect with us together, all in Christ. And, uh, and yeah, that's the end, uh, that's the most important things of this chapter. If you wanna go more into detail, you can just, um, read the, the, either the references, right, or read it more carefully. Uh, and yeah, I hope you guys enjoyed. Thanks for watching. God bless you. See ya. Bye bye.